All right, if everyone could take a seat, please. All right, welcome, everybody. It is Tuesday, February 27, 2024. It is 6:37 PM, and you are at a joint commission of the Wausau Water Works and a committee of the whole. First, I'm going to take role for the Wausau Water Works Commission. We do have a quorum with Alder Herbst, Mr. Jean, and myself. I'll pass it over to the council president.
Good evening. We have a quorum present of the council members with 11 members present.
All right, thank you. The only item we have in our agenda, item number two, is discussion, utility commission structure. So you've had an opportunity to think through the discussion we had earlier. You've had a chance to digest the memo. You've had a chance to think about things. So I think maybe this is your time to now discuss. So I don't know if we're using, we're not using our buttons, so you might have to raise your hand if you want to be called on.
Alder Denny?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess a couple of questions. I don't know that I really heard yet what the, what the problem was. We had a few stray calls to abolish, and we had a few more complaints, but I haven't seen any of that fleshed out in either writing or a formal complaint. So that's a big leap from taking some stray calls to a policy question on possibly abolishing the commission. So I, you know, we have, this is, this also has statute, state statutory questions and implications, and I haven't seen that in the packet. Have we had a legal opinion on, on what we can or can't do? There's obviously an ordinance in the, in the city here that covers, I think probably covers most everything we're going to need to talk about. But to me, that, it seems like we haven't articulated the, the problem, and we really haven't given proper notice. We got this on Friday, and here we are with not, not having the six-day rule in effect for residents to be able to react. Yeah, we've, we've had an inkling that this was coming, but we really haven't, haven't had a solid information to go on. So I guess that question is, do we, I put two questions out there. One is the definition of the problem, and two is a legal opinion.
We talked about the definition of the problem on January 24. I believe you were here. The definition of the problem is, there is a very big problem with HR. In the HR, we have a pinch point when the commission is able to raise wages by themselves, do wage studies by themselves, without council knowledge or council input besides Alder Herbst, and then our HR director has to try to keep equality with the rest of our workforce. That is why. We are, this year, we had competing staffing and wage studies between the commission and the HR committee with, for the city, and there was, I believe you were at every meeting when there was all these issues came up between the commission and the, the department head and the HR director regarding not, not actually agreeing of, is this an issue? Do wages need to go up the 200 or 450,000 for the reorg? All of that. I don't know about you, but my residents have been very clear, and they have called, and I go to two neighborhood meetings a month, and this has come up more than once. I can share with you an email I received this, today, and I passed it on to the mayor, and it said that they would, they do not, they do not feel that they're, they want it where Alders are running this because of the fact they feel that Alders are more responsive, and they have more control, and there's more skin in the game. That was the email, and I can share that with everyone. It's in public email. So we talked about this on the 24th of January with these issues, and I guess that is a big problem. And it has, this isn't something recent. I've been on HR for eight years, and it's come up before. Do we want a separate entity and enterprise to run that? But then they ran into problems, and then it comes back to finance, and then we have to finance things. There's, there's a lot of things that, that, that we could discuss about this. So that is my two cents about why we're having this meeting. I don't, I don't know, maybe nobody calls you, but they call me, and it's been getting louder and louder since the PFAS issue.
I was not asked for a legal opinion of any sort or anything specific with regards to this, but I can tell you that under the state statute 660805, which I now have memorized, I wish I had a copy of it in front of me, does give the council broad authority to establish a utility commission, and it also gives it the authority to style that group. And I mean, they don't have to turn everything over to a utility commission, so you could hand those same duties to a board of public works. As the mayor has outlined in her memo, those are all legal options that she found in other cities by calling around, so those are all viable options. It's a policy, policy decision you have to make. But once, once you create a utility commission, the manager of the commission answers to the utility commission, and that person has the right to set compensation and wages separately for water utility, for utility employees, separate from that of the general city population of employees. And we have always treated them all as city employees and followed the same wage study as Becky was talking about, you know, for, we've studied the entirety of the city employment when we've done wage studies, let me put it that way. But you've seen recently, as she mentioned, studies that were done by the utility commission separately, and legally, they have the right to do that. But it, it puts the city in a tough spot. The city's going to have to make a decision. Do we want to let the utility manage their own employees and set their own wages, and we'll budget for it, or they're going to budget for it, or should we re-style the utility commission and maybe take back some of that authority and retool it? That, that's what's at stake here to discuss.
So it's, there's an ordinance, and that was not also in the packet. So there, there's an ordinance, city ordinance, that, that we would have to-
In chapter 13 that creates-
Chapter 13, 1.04.
And then the state statute is 66.0805.
So it, it seems to outline pretty well what, what the issues are. It talks about the commission delegates all personnel matters to the director of public works, and the human resources department of the city employee, of the city to employ compensates that policy and resolve all personnel matters as necessary in the best interest of the utility. I mean, this has been in place for 30 years, and so to me, it, it seems that there's a solution outside of disrupting the entire structure of the, of the commission and to solve some of these problems. I think there are other items in here that allows the city council to fix those problems, but it's not to upend this. So I, I guess I still stand on the objection that, that we don't have a problem.
Thank you. Thank you. I tend to agree with Alder Denny on this. When I first saw this, I thought that this really seems to be a sweeping solution in search of a problem, and I think that it has largely spun out of some conflict that has arisen in the last, I would say, six months between a couple of department directors that I think could have been solved differently versus airing it in a public forum on live television. So, you know, that said, I think the commission is a commission for a reason. It contains citizen members, it contains an alder, and it contains staff advise, relevant staff advisors. And I think that often, when you have a commission versus a city committee, that does tend to dilute some of the politics and the political maneuverings of the operation of the public utility. Also, citizen members bring unique perspective and knowledge. I mean, when they are selected and put on that commission, it's because they have relevant skill and experience that can bring something to the committee that can color those discussions that we often, as Alders, don't have. I think that, you know, if we wanted to change some of the tasks that we delegate to the commission, we certainly have that ability. If we would like to have final oversight over things like budget administration and staffing levels, I mean, in many ways, when we approve our fiscal budget, we do, we do. But I think that we really, you know, we also could stand to add a member or two. We could add another council member with some relative crossover assignments. If you want a council member to sit on that commission that has a background in HR or runs HR, chairs HR, then we do that. If you want one that has a background in finance, you can either put on the finance director, or you can put on your finance, you know, a finance committee member with dual appointment to that commission, you know. So I think if we are judicious in how we select which council members sit on that commission, sometimes you can tap that relevant knowledge, depending on who is, who's on there. Right now, we have one person. You know, if we wanted a couple of seats, you could certainly amend it to add those couple of seats without throwing out and blowing up the entire organization. You know, I think when it comes time to look at required and necessary staffing levels, utilities operate under a little different oversight. There's some minimum staffing levels, and you can find yourself in a hot minute in trouble with the DNR if you are not properly staffing to run your utility. And if you have difficulty attracting and retaining talent, and you remain in that short-staffed deficient state for too long, there's other consequences for that. I mean, that's just a little bit different than a lot of other departments where we, as a council, can tell those departments, well, do more with less, and they're forced to just go out and find a way. There's some, a different level of oversight when you're running a public utility. And so I think that we should not be hasty to throw out the notion of a commission. And I also think the creation of a city committee where, you know, we don't have that level of citizen engagement, and we don't have that, that makeup, I think we would be, I think, making a mistake by getting rid of the commission. I think we can modify the commission, and, you know, maybe outline the duties a little bit differently, or at least place final oversight over certain things that have created conflict within this body, but I don't think we should get rid of that commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe that, although I agree with Alder Asberson to a point, I think that the city council needs to have more oversight on this, especially when there's, when there's HR problems involved, threats of raising the water rates and stuff. I think that's what accumulated this whole thing, is, is when they publicly came and threatened to raise the water rates, and, and that, that needs to stop. I think, I, I think when the city council needs to have more, the city has, I think the city personnel needs their elected officials more involved in this. And, and whether it be a, a standing committee with, with, say, let's have the water commission as our overseers or advisors. But I think the time has come where, I mean, I've looked over this, we've talked about this. I don't know where Alder Denny comes, where he says this, this came out of the blue, it didn't. I believe that somehow, some way, the city Alders need, need more, need more, need to be more involved in this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One question. I don't know who the, the relevant person to ask would be, but I'll just throw it out there, and we'll see. So some of these targeted issues that we've had over time in regard to human resources and rates, would there be a more surgical way of dealing with this from a policy perspective, where even if it, you know, it was in, in terms of codified reform of certain duties or roles, or it could be in the form of, of a formal oversight? Does anyone know, just, I'll start with that question, procedurally and policy-wise, is there a surgical way of, of dealing with the issues that have arisen?
Well, there is some kind of, it's not clear in some of the ordinances how to deal with some of those HR. It says the utility director and the HR director. And so I think that, in my mind, means both, but if there's a conflict, you know, it goes to the utility commission, and it also goes to the HR commission. And I will say, as somebody who's on a couple of these commissions, it is complicated when you have a policy body like the city council, who has very, I don't know, vocal outspoken, you know, thoughts that they have on, on decisions here, but they're also the keepers of the ordinances, and it's hard to know, like, are we going to rule from the ordinances? I think that's the thing, like, we govern from the ordinances, and if you've put those out here, that's what it says. It's not necessarily the clearest, and there are a couple other instances where it's not clear. So I think we probably could do some updating of those ordinances. Now, when it comes to things like rates, I think we've all heard from folks who are upset about it, and you didn't necessarily get a vote on it. And that was what I was hearing from some Alders. I want to have a say in this. I was reading about it in some letters to the editor, that the, the council members want to have a say in this. So I think that's what's bringing this up, is that there's some conflict there, too, with rates, because we have shared constituents. So, but HR is another issue, too. But I don't know if you have anything to add over here. Okay.
Well, I mean, HR is a unique animal in our standing committees, and Alder Killian, you're on the committee, in that we are tasked with treating people equally as much as we can. We look at, you know, we have job descriptions and bands that go together with the job descriptions with, you know, what their, what their duties are to make sure, and that's gone over and over and over. There are very specific laws in place outside of ordinances with HR, and how people are to be treated as employees. I get those emails from other employees, and I have for eight years, when we, when the commission starts talking about reorgs and things such as that. Now, the HR director and the previous HR director had heartburn about the constant talk about, well, the commission can decide to decide compensation themselves, because they didn't know how to get their arms around that animal and still keep that equality and equity within our entire employee group. That's important to me. I want everybody to feel that they're on the same plane level, and because they're not working at a utility that has an ordinance and has a different, different way of, with a commission doing those type of activities and have those abilities, that they're not treated the same as maybe somebody in DPW. And that, that is a concern. And I don't mind doing a surgical situation and adding, you know, people or more expertise, but that, that ability with compensation with HR is now getting to a boiling point, because we're having competing staffing studies done and things like that. Now, $30,000 was spent to do that, but I read it, and I didn't understand the staffing study as much. It did talk a lot about technology needs, down there, and the people need iPads, and, you know, and that has been talked about as well. I just, again, that's another thing to bring up about HR, about the staffing. We get something brought up to us, we just hear a blurb of why they need it. We're not, it's not like the normal way of doing things, because it comes to us from water commission. So we don't have that lens of what is your needs, why is this your needs, and HR is, HR director's kind of on the outside. So that's my concern, and if we do do a surgical, I would like that addressed, because this isn't something just in the last six months. This has been, this has been for a number of times that, and, and it's not that any of the HR directors have had any problem, you know, with, with trying to work with the commission. It is, they are tasked with treating everyone as equally as they can, and it isn't, and employees are watching. So that is something I would like to, you know, I would like to explore, at least that portion.
Thank you. That's helpful. And yes, on the HR committee with you and some of my colleagues, and yes, I've seen this unfold in, in several meetings, whether it's just kind of, you know, operational challenges of really two different entities or, or what, it has, I think, created some problems. If there'd be a way, you know, the mayor mentioned ordinances and being governed under them, obviously, if that's something that we could take care of through a reform of some sort, the, the HR type of dynamic and making sure, I, I, like you, if I'm hearing correctly, would like to see a more uniform kind of oversight structure of HR at both entities. Even now, they're, they're structured as, as two different ones, and yes, it seems most appropriate and effective to have the HR department and our HR director involved or at the top of those decisions in, in assessment. I think if we, you know, with the water utility and commission, if we need to know about water, that would be a good group to ask. But in terms of just broad HR policy, I think it would make sense to, to try to streamline that and put it under the umbrella, if possible, through some surgical reforms of HR and the HR director. I think that's what I'd be most interested in seeing initially, without right away the profound change in structure that's before us today. I mean, Alder Denny had brought kind of the statutory, you know, guidelines in Wisconsin, and even our, our own code that lays things out. I think it might make sense for the bodies to maybe have a little more access to that information and study up before actually entertaining a complete structural change. But certainly on the HR level, and to some degree, if it's possible, the rate level, certainly would be eager to hear what we could do to reform dynamics in a way that give more oversight and impact at the city level.
Thank you. I, I agree. I think the, the ordinance somewhat has to be re-looked at. I, I am also one who believes in the great equality across, across departments in the city of Wausau. Wausau, and I think that would be one of the things that, I think that's one of the things that I've always pursued, and I think a redoing of the ordinance, I think, will lay that out very clearly. Is there another, does finance do, is there others ways that the city council, like finance, Water Commission budget at the end of the year? What other standing committees weigh in on the functioning budget or whatever of the of the Water Commission? I'm not, you know, does the Water Commission budget get put into the budget without any a look at by, for instance, the the Finance Committee?
Do you want me to answer that? Okay.
We both talked at the same time.
Yep. So, the utility budget on an annual basis is largely developed by the utility, but it's a component of the budget workshops that the Finance Committee conducts as part of the total budget review. And when the city council approves its budget and has a public hearing on it, that all is a component of that budget discussion. There's an entire section of our budget that is for the utility. And so it's meted out by the utility, because they know what the needs are better than what the individual Finance Committee does, much like motor pool and rolling stock and all of the other things that we look at, that are housed within those individual departments that utilize those programs. But we do have some oversight over that, and when the council approves its budget, it is then by association approving the utilities, component of that as well. You know, I think that we have to watch, look at, from a finance standpoint, what our sphere of control actually is. The city council and the commission do not set water rates, the PSC sets water rates. We do, however, in the council, Finance Committee in the council, we control the borrowing. We all voted to borrow $120 million to fix those plants. That happened in the council chamber. It didn't happen with the commission on its own. You know, we control the sewer rate, we as a council vote to set the sewer rate, which is part of that bill that people get. But the PSC has its own public-facing process when it sets water rates, including public hearings. And so we really aren't removed from that part, but the actual budget oversight piece, you know, and their CIP, I mean, we look at utility projects in CIP. You know, last year it was, to alleviate the borrowing, we approved some ARPA funding to offset some of their projects, but, you know, we we do have some oversight. The commission isn't acting completely autonomously at all, when it comes to the money part.
Well, but I, thank you for that. I think I think the city council needed to hear that. And I would suggest that if we're going to be looking at the the ordinance itself, that may want to start with HR, with the HR Committee. I think that it does need some reworking, and I'm, and I think that the HR Committee is responsible for looking at the entire staff and workers of the city of Wausau and agreeing with Alder Person McCallion. I think we really have that obligation, and I agree with that, and that's what, that's why I'm I'm here. Thank you.
Commissioner Jean.
I I sense a pause, and I appreciate the hearing the pause. The concern about the wages, I know we're concerned about them, but when I read that agenda item that when we had that joint meeting with HR and the utility, I don't think that was the utility's desire to have it worded that way. So I don't know how that got worded, but I, and I think I made a comment there that I I find it difficult, when I know there was a lot of staff here, and I don't know who all the staff were, I should probably know all my utility people, but I don't anymore. And I think there was some DPW people there, and I know when I was in charge of those departments, I find it very difficult to treat them differently. I understand that. But I think there's a way to come to some resolution, so that we maintain our staffing levels, but I'm not sure how to do that, but I know we need to, and Lisa spoke to that too, that the DNR doesn't care if you don't have enough staff, they'll write you a letter or an order. I can assure you that. If you can't get that job done, that that'll that'll just be an order, and you will have to figure that out. When I came here in 79, the wastewater plant, two digestors, if I remember correctly, certainly one roof was in, it hadn't been repaired for years. So we had to go on and complete, and we, and the city was under orders by the DNR. It took me two to three years to get that resolved. We don't want to go there. We want to be, we want to be recognized as a very efficient operating utility on the water and on the wastewater. I didn't prepare notes, but there's a couple other points I want to make, and Lisa spoke to those too. The utility has not, I don't think has, can borrow a penny. Other than maybe, but it might be still blessed by the council, we borrow between the two utilities once in a while to fund, but I can't remember how the final ratification of that took place, and whether it was done just within our, the two utilities. We don't set rates. The Water Utility was started in, I don't know about the utility itself, but the public water supply started in 1885. And you can probably just about guess why they wanted water supply, they wanted to fight fires. And I always thought the hydrants may have been the pusher, because every every structure was wood. But then you think about it, if they're going to, if the city of Wausau is going to grow at that timeframe, as they start to go up the hills, they're not going to drill wells then, they would have had to have public water supply. So that probably came hand in hand, public water supply for homes and businesses, as well as fire protection. I don't know exactly when the utility, when I read through the old documents dating back to that timeframe, I got the impression there was a Utility Commission formed, probably under state statute, but I I can't say that for certain, and I'm not, I don't mean to leave you with that impression. So, and then the sewer side, just a little history on that too. The sewer, we had combined sewers up until in the late 30s, early 40s, that's when our first wastewater treatment plant went in, went in service, and we had to separate the sanitary from the storm. You talk about a major project, that was a major project for for a community, all those communities throughout the country had to do that. They had to separate storm from sanitary at some timeframe in their existence. So, and then I know there was a, and at that time, it was the wastewater plant and the incinerator. So I don't know who ran that, but it became part of the Utility Commission, I think in the 60s, because when I came here, it was part of it. But there was two bodies, so we, eventually we merged it into one utility, so we didn't have to have a cumbersome agenda item, items, sort of like having two agendas for one meeting. So I know we consolidated that. And then your sewer rate, well, Lisa already made it very clear, PSC basically sets the water rates. We, all we do is implement them. On the sewer side, you set them by ordinance. In fact, I think I wrote the first sewer use ordinance for the city of Wausau when I came here. You had to demonstrate to the DNR, if you wanted grant dollars, that had to be under user charge, not under taxes or anything like that. If you wanted to get those grants, which we were very blessed to get, and I think we've continued to get the value out of, although they call them loans now, but principal forgiveness, but maybe you've heard enough from me, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, Alder.
Yeah, I guess, thank you. I guess I'd like to see it, if we can solve this by changing the ordinance a little bit, you know, 13.04. Just a thought came to my mind when we were talking about if we want to add, or if that doesn't work, or we can't find a clean way to do that, and we want to add a finance member or an HR member. I know on public health and safety, the very first meeting of every term, we vote two people to the liquor license committee. Just thinking aloud, that might be a good way to get someone from the HR onto the Water Utility and and Finance, so thank you.
Good ideas and suggestions. Commissioner Jean.
I'm not going to ask anybody to raise their hand, but how many of our council members have been to our facilities, the old and the new? And if you, if you haven't been there, don't be embarrassed about that, but take the time to go down there and look and see what's really going on. And the other thing I did want to reaffirm, we don't deal with the rates, as you well know, we deal with the O and M from month to month and the annual reports. That's our business. And you don't build a water treatment plant or a wastewater treatment plant every year. The generation for water is probably 30 to 50 years, and the wastewater, it is a little more frequent because of the nature of what we're doing. It's very corrosive, and so we have to replace equipment, maybe not concrete as much, but we do have, so we're not in the business to, unfortunately, make our citizens upset about the rates, we just have to comply, and and that was the fallout, and I thought we had a lot of information at the time, so everybody knew what the utility commission was suggesting or recommending.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for that info. And you don't have to raise your hand, Mr. Jean, I'd ask you to raise your hand if the utility runs on rate revenue, and I believe it does, unless I'm mistaken. So I think, at least I had never been suggesting that the utility was quote-unquote setting the rates in the procedural sense and in relation to to any borrowing or the PSC. I think the way I and some other residents have looked at it, it's on both sides of the equation, not just the utility, it's the city too, that decisions impact fiscal considerations and need, and then generally for a utility that runs on rate revenues, those associations, those decisions and needs are generally tied to rates ultimately. Now, I think we can see this on both sides of the equation, with the utility, if we don't have the flexibility right now in our current rate structure, some of the HR decisions or restructuring of sorts could have fiscal implications, and those tend to be invariably tied to rates, was my understanding, whether they're within our current, you know, rate model right now, or if that's something we'd have to ultimately go back and and do a process for it to see if more revenue was needed. But it's the the attachment to rates isn't just on the utility's sides in that regard, it's also on the city's side, so the city doesn't just deal with borrowing and so forth. We, as a body, have the ability to deal with the utility pilot payment, and in that case, my understanding is, the state statutes aren't saying, hey, here's the calculation you must apply to extract that revenue from the utility. The state statute, in my understanding, sets the maximum, the calculation of the maximum that you can extract. So I think on both sides of the equation, with decisions from the utility, sometimes HR decisions and decisions from the city, like on the utility pilot, even though it may not be pulling the trigger or pressing a button on increasing or decreasing rates, those decisions on both sides of the equation have an impact on rates. So I think, you know, I'm definitely eager to be corrected on that if I'm mistaken, but I think on both sides of the coin, there is room to make decisions and streamline decisions in a way we have efficient operations, but yet we are bringing water rates down. I don't think those two things are mutually exclusive or pie in the sky, but it may take a little more streamlining, I think especially when it comes to HR considerations.
Thank you, Becky. I I just want to add a few things. First of all, I am really pleased to be able to work with these people that are on the Water Commission. Joe Jean, Jim Forrest, and John Robinson are absolutely outstanding. They know what they're doing, they know everything about pipes and everything, and you name it. I couldn't be happy to work with such a great people. And we meet once a month, I don't think people realize what an agenda that we have, that we have a Director's Report, which is Eric Lindman, and we have quite the long agendas, and sometimes we're here for a while, but we do make a lot of decisions, and I think there's a lot of decisions that are made that people are not aware of. All they ever hear is the negative. I don't think they ever hear that the Water Commission does something very, very positive. And I I'm sorry, but I think it would be a mistake to abolish this committee. I would definitely be in support of one HR and one finance person, I think that would be great, but to abolish this committee as it stands right now would be one of the biggest mistakes that this committee of the whole could could make. Thank you.
Alda Resselson.
Thank you. I agree that I think we need to have some discussions about the pilot payment, the payment in lieu of tax. We had those discussions during the ratification of our budget, you know, and I think we had a volume of opinions about maybe a phased and strategic approach to gradually phasing out and reducing that pilot payment, that should then increase the financial health of the utility, and it should have a positive impact on ratepayers. So, you know, we all were interested in that. We actually, as part of that discussion, agreed that we would take up that discussion in the Finance Committee at a future date. We were given the Finance Director and the staff some time to finish working their way through the end of 2023 and the implementation of the Workday software, which has consumed them. But that said, this year, we have agreed to undertake that discussion, and we've tasked at least the Finance Director and the Public Works Director into having some internal discussions as to how a phased approach and a gradual reduction of that pilot payment could be accomplished without short cutting the revenue in the general fund to the point where we are cutting services to our residents. So we absolutely, I think we all left here in agreement, knowing that we should look at that, and we wanted to know more about it, and we wanted to see what that timeline could look like. I think that could have some positive impact on ratepayers and on the utility, but it cannot be all at once. I think we all left here with the realization that if we make some sudden and sweeping movement, there is a counterbalancing movement that happens within the city budget that is not sustainable, that we need to plan for that. And every year, if we're going to do an incremental reduction on the pilot, we need to figure out where we are at with that revenue balance within the general fund. So, you know, I think it can be done, I think it absolutely can and should be done, and I don't think anyone was disagreeing with the fact that we wanted to know more about those possibilities, I think we still do, and I think that's discussion that we can definitely have in 2024.
Okay, so I'm just gonna, we have about 12 minutes left before we have City Council, and so the two things I wrote down for the the takeaways, and I feel pretty confident on the direction for HR, we want to update the ordinances, so there's clear direction on this process, and we want the City HR Committee to kind of lead on that process. Okay. The second point, the finance portion, and you're right, we did say that we would have a meeting in August, I believe, to go over those finances, so that we can understand a little bit more about where we are with the budget, with the pilot, all of that, so yes. But I'm not necessarily clear on the direction of this body or these bodies, on what you would like for this. Do we want the city Finance Committee to offer oversight? Do we want support? Do we want strategic direction? Do we want to have regular meetings that kind of are joint meetings with the Finance Committee, so we can get an idea of where we're at? I mean, maybe that's twice a year, I don't know, but I'm just curious, what do, for the finance portion, what does this, what do these bodies think?
Thank you. I'll just offer some insight, I guess, as the Finance Committee Chair. I think there's value in having some coordinated effort. I think that, you know, it's certainly not something that we would need on a monthly basis, but I think if we would look at maybe a mid-year review, you know, and maybe even quarterly reports, as far as where we are at with the budget after each functional fiscal quarter, you know, are we on plan? Are we ahead of plan? Are we behind plan? Are the expenses outweighing the revenues? So that we have a heads up on those things. And knowing that, you know, come July, we're starting to undertake the CIP process, I think it's useful for us to know what the utility's needs are. We already kind of know what they are in terms of their street and road capabilities. When SISAM picks street and road projects, the utility is along for the ride. As soon as we approve streets and roads, they have to do their part. So that kind of gets decided for them, but they have other needs in terms of equipment and staffing. There would be value in, you know, knowing in advance what those things look like, and then we too can give some guidance as far as if there's a parallel committee process that needs process that needs to happen, we could, like, send that there and kick them off. So, you know, I would certainly at least support a joint meeting on a semi-annual basis to see where we're at, and even quarterly reports to see where we're at. It may not need to necessarily be a joint committee-commission meeting. But I think the committee getting those reports to see where we're at in terms of the dollars and where we think we're going to come out, it's helpful to know that early. So, you know, on the reporting side. But a joint meeting, you know, at the midpoint of the year to figure out what direction, I think that's helpful, without taking an exorbitant amount of everyone's time.
Alder Martin.
Yeah. And I was just gonna, I was gonna pretty much say the same thing as Alder Rasmussen said. I'm in agreement with that. I think that, I'm, I'm not totally sold on having a, you know, a finance person on the commission at this point in time yet. But I think that a joint meetings, at least twice a year, with quarterly updates would be good, especially as, you know, one, as we're, as we're moving into the CIP process, to know what the, yeah, what the, what the commission's needs are. And then, and then a second, as we approach the budget workshops, so that we have a better idea of the, the water, you know, the utility's needs on a, on a fiscal standpoint. And we can make those adjustments or at a, at a joint meeting in, in, in advance of, of having the New Year's budget ready to go.
Alder, Alder Killian.
Thank you. And many have discussed, you know, the possibility of, you know, looking at the ordinance and changing. I think there's some different opinions on the, on the two bodies about how to go about doing that. And, you know, I thought one of the least would be having a finance and human resources member. I say one of the least, actually, when we started the discussion tonight, I asked my question, would there be surgical options? I think, I'm not sure joint meetings always do a heck of a lot. I mean, we've had joint meetings now twice with the water commission and the council or committee. And here we are tonight with no real resolution at hand. I guess my question would be not just about meetings or adding some council members from finance or human resources, but within Wisconsin statutes and how it lays it out for the utility, what it would, what would it take for ordinance reform to just explicitly state, first of all, is it legal and statutory, statutorily possible in Wisconsin? But just what would it take to put human resource decisions under human resources and the, and the HR director? Just very clean and simple, if that's allowed by state statute, if, you know?
It's not when it comes to management of hiring employees and setting compensation. That's our, that state statute's already been interpreted by case law under 660805. When a city establishes a utility commission, it surrenders its authority to manage, employ, and set the compensation of its employees.
Thank you. So, I guess I'd circle back to, again, the beginning of the meeting, what we have in our packet. If these were triggered by mainly like HR concerns and conflicts, and if under statutes, we can't do anything about that, with the options we had in our packet, would that have somehow created a different scenario where we would have the legal authority to do such things? Or just in general, it's not possible?
Yes, because it would involve dismantling the utility commission and creating some other body and taking all the authority and management and operation of the utility back under the leadership of the council instead of a utility commission. That's the difference.
Then, you know, my suggestion from District 3 would be to look at this through a long-term study and deliberation on, on how we actually get a handle on the situation. I think tonight has been mentioned, I mean, we really didn't have a lot of meat in terms of information. It's a very dramatic change to even entertain. I just feel like a long-term process to somehow figure out if there can be a resolution on, on some of the HR matters to take a longer look than on what would it take to make that effective and legal. I certainly wouldn't feel comfortable, as some others have mentioned, making such a decision after getting the info on, on Friday and having a very profound change. But I think in the long term, very long-term planning, I would like to see how we could resolve that then in a legal fashion.
Thank you for that. So, going forward, it would probably be helpful to put the statute, the ordinances together, the case law. I think the league even publishes a manual on utility commissions. I mean, they have them on PFC and lots of other things. Maybe try to delineate what authority the commission has once it's created and what it does not have. So, you know what you can enter into and what you can't. And then I think taking a separate look at updating our ordinances. But again, you can't create what you want there if it's against state statute or case law.
Correct. At least for me. And my district would be very helpful, Attorney Jacobson, to get that information, maybe for my colleagues as well. As you said, if we are looking at making changes or revisions, it would help to know beforehand and at the time if they're legal under state statute. So, yes, it'd be very, I think that would be very helpful to get all of that information. Thank you.
Alder Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I had it on all the time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Dangerous.
And then, if we could have that, what Alder Killian said, how that would, we could possibly offer some different scenarios for another meeting on, on, you know, how these new resolutions and stuff, how we could implement option one, option two, or option three, or perhaps come up with option four. You know, do you understand what I'm saying?
Not really.
Yeah, it's the ones the mayor did. I think this option.
Well, when you're, when you're looking at options, when you're looking at resolutions and how to reform resolutions and stuff, how, you know, they would fit into these options that are in front of us? Or are there any option, any other options available?
If you don't mind if I can respond, one of the things that's challenging is hearing that, like, we'd like change, but not having, like, what exactly that is. So, that's why I kind of, we had this cow, we talked about this earlier in the year. And so, really understanding the direction that these bodies would like to go helps us craft something that you would actually like to see. Because we've seen things that got before you, and you were like, where the heck did this come from? We hate it. So, I don't want to do that. And I think Ann would also appreciate not writing multiple versions of a resolution. So, maybe we can look at these items. I put down three items that we found were the pain points. And so, maybe considering those three items and what it looks like in the context of both having the commission and not having the commission, and maybe those options would be getting us closer to what we need to discuss, if that sounds amenable to you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. All right, we got one minute left of this. Is there anybody that didn't get a chance to say something that they wanted to go ahead and say? Otherwise, I would take a motion to adjourn from the utility commission. I have a motion by Commissioner Jean and a second by Alder Herbst. All in favor, consistent with saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And now you cow people.
Cow people.
Could I have a motion? Motion to adjourn, second by, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. See you in a minute.
All right, thank you.
Herbst.
Oh.
Yes, he did, yes.
All right, we're just gonna take a few minutes to reset before the council meeting.